Hello, all right. Call this October 8, 2013, work session to order. Daniel, please call the rule.
Councilmember Evan Chase-Williams, District 1.
Present.
Councilmember Jim Iron, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Bates-Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Present.
All members are present. Mayor Davis, we have a floor.
All right. Opening remarks. First off, we have somebody leaving us tonight. Someone who's been serving with us for, since the inception of the city and even serving with the Governor's Commission before. City Attorney Bill Riley is leaving us to continue his expertise in city government affairs. I'd like to thank Bill for his expertise and his help since, but with the Governor's Commission, but particularly from the beginning of the city and back in December, for guiding us, helping us get things right, helping us make sure we are scared when we need to be scared and moving forward when we can. And just always being available to address issues that any of our, the council has and making sure that we didn't get in trouble. And I don't think we got in trouble in a big, serious way. So he's going to remain as a city solicitor, but I just want to thank you, Bill, for your service to the city of Brookhaven and I just appreciate everything you did and for making us, you know, having someone like you, when we're forming our city, making sure we do things the right way and build the city the right way was invaluable. So, thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate it and I'm honored to have served and I'm honored to continue to serve as your prosecutor.
All right. Anybody else have any comments about that?
No, I'm just, you know, the remarks. This is a, it's kind of a unique area of the law. Not very many people know about the startup of new cities and we were just blessed that Bill was ready and available to us and helped us stand up our city and at times when ordinances were coming fast and furious and we were meeting a couple of times a week, it was a little crazy, but Bill was like the calm pilot and kept us all straight and on the right course and I will be forever grateful to you. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I say, I just want to say, I second those remarks also. Thank you for all your service and get us going and appreciate it.
Joe?
Yeah, I just really want to end to my thanks. You are a really good guiding, guiding light when we needed it, for sure. You knew what we didn't know and we didn't know that we didn't know. So that was great. You know, you can always look back and say, how successful was it when we look at the, how many bumps did we really hit that we had difficulties getting over? And you really basically minimized that to us to a very, very large degree. And we couldn't have done it without you. You were the right man, the right time, in the right place, and your expertise was right on spot. I'm indebted to you and I say thank you on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
And I'll follow up with the same. I've learned a lot over the last year as we've grown the city, everything from where the best table is at the GMA convention to what the best ordinance are to put forward for the, for the city. So for that, I appreciate your help and your guidance and look forward to working with you as the solicitor going forward. Thank you.
All right. Do you have anything you want to say, Bill?
I did it once, but I'll thank you all again.
Okay. Okay. Regular meeting review, agenda review.
Yes. Okay. Okay. My on? Hello? Hello?
Make sure the mic is on.
Just tap it.
Okay, all right. I'm on.
Just pull it a little closer to you.
Okay. We have a short agenda this evening and I'll begin with, of course, we're going to be led in the pledge by the St. Martin's Pact Number 560, but going on to the consent agenda, you'll see, as you typically do, are the minutes from previous meetings, the September 24th work session and September 24th regular council meeting. October the 2nd is the special called city council meeting. And then number four is authorization permitting the mayor and city manager to execute contracts with Blunt Construction Company, Inc., Incorporated, Georgia Development Partners, LLC, Southern Premier Contractors and IPR Southeast LLC for stormwater utility on-demand service for the city of Brookhaven. These services and these multiple contractors are named for the purpose of getting a better price. We have a per-unit price for a number of activities and it allows us to go from one contractor to another. So that's why we're asking for all of these contractors to be approved and authorized for the mayor and myself to sign their contract. We found that we've gotten better economies of scale, better pricing, and also more prompt availability. If one contractor's not available, we can go to the second one on the list. Now, these were all bid out and they have been reviewed by our public works director.
You just gotta pull it, pull the weight and part closer. There you go.
Okay. Now?
You just need to be turned up maybe a little bit.
Okay, turn, okay.
That's good.
That's good, okay. Okay, so that's what we have there under consent agenda. Under old business, you've seen this for several months now and we are now permitted to go into a second reading for Century Center annexation. That is the first item under Century Center annexing approximately 100 acres, more or less, and then the rezoning of that property to PC3 pedestrian community district. This was heard by the planning commission in July and you had your first reading and public hearing in July as well as a council. There will be no public hearing on this matter tonight. This is a second reading that will come before you. Under new business, we have an ordinance to amend Chapter 14, land development of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia, to amend Article 4, Section 14-411A, entitled Flood Plane Management Basis for Area of Special Flood Hazard, Flood Area Maps and Studies and for Other Purposes. So it's just that section of that chapter, not the chapter in its entirety. And that's all we have for business this evening. We do have an executive session for the work session that I would ask that we go into.
Okay. Discussion on either consent agenda or on the old business?
I have a question about old business. Just as a refresher on the, on the rezoning ordinance, can you help me understand what conditions were on there for the planning commission? Just to make sure that... Is it, it's all, it's down in the pack?
It is in the pack, correct, and I've got it marked here.
Yeah, what page?
206.
206.
Yeah, 206, 207. 206 is the actual recommended conditions and there are four conditions and I'll go ahead and read those into the record if you'd like. Subject property shall be developed in substantial accordance with the Century Center Office Park Master Plan and POD description included within the staff recommendation. Just a side note, you'll recall when the applicant, Highwoods Properties, filed their application for annexation, they did file a master plan which laid out much of the property as its current state because the majority of the 100-plus more or less acres are already developed. They did propose a town center, which is in the central section of the development. Currently, it's low-rise buildings. Most of them are one-story. They're almost 50 years old and the plan is to raise those over the next six to eight years and create a town center mixed-use development. Condition number two is pedestrian community district development aspects pertaining to ownership, phasing, transportation, and stormwater management practices shall be executed by the developer in conjunction with the community development director. Condition three, any previous development standards or permits approved or issued by DeKalb County at the time of annexation shall be accepted by the city of Brookhaven. Condition number four, any previous conditions of zoning, special land use permits, variances, or other special permits imposed by DeKalb County shall be in effect and shall be implemented in conjunction with the master plan. Any such DeKalb County terms and imposed conditions by the city of Brookhaven shall be interpreted and implemented by the community development director. There was an additional condition offered by the planning commission and that was any change in roadway pattern, building footprint, or any deviation in proportions of residential, commercial, retail space and deviation from what is required in the PC3 district ordinance is to be considered a substantial change that must require approval by the planning commission and city council. On your ordinance that you had for the first, excuse me...
Is that last condition?
It was not included as part of the ordinance for annexation and rezoning. You did not include that in your first read.
Do you have a recommendation on that?
Yes, I do. I recommend that we continue with what the mayor and council approved and that was the first four conditions. So that is the overview of the, of the project. Now, Century Center is much larger than what this annexation request includes. As you recall, the property is owned by Highwoods Property, which is a real estate investment trust along with the Crum family. Ms. Crum, who grew up on this property, has her family farm. There are other parcels that are part of what was the Crum family farm and now Century Center, but not party to this particular annexation. There have been comments and requests made by some of the remaining property owners, not part of this annexation application, that are interested in annexing into the city and I expect that we should receive applications for the same.
When?
I think soon.
Okay.
And one of the, one of the issues that came up was talking about, I know that the property, Highwoods Properties are interested in helping with green space improvements there and they discussed some, had discussed a willingness to define that in some way. Do you have, do we have a way to put that recommended stuff into the lang, into language?
Yes, in fact, yes, we do. In fact, there is a, there could be a statement of understanding from meetings and conversations that have been held by myself and I think even offered by some of the members of the elected. And that is, and a couple, in fact, I had three conversations with Mr. Pachetta today on this very matter and they are very excited to be a part of the recreation and master plan, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, to the point that they are looking for opportunities to utilize their resources that they have on the property, such as their green space, trails along the, a linear portion or format along the creek, looking at opportunities for what they can do to the creek. They don't want their project to have their back to the creek. They want to be able to embrace it and looking for other open space opportunities for their development as it grows in population with employment and residents.
And would that be a part of a condition, that letter of understanding, or is that something separate?
I think that is something that's separate because we want to engage them as we do all of the community when we're working through the master plan components because remember when, when we do the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, first and foremost with the parks that we know are city parks, we've got to classify those parks. Are they a neighborhood? Are they a regional park? Are they a community park? Or are they a pocket park? And with some of these green space properties that we have identified, that the county has acquired along the creeks within the county, we would like to incorporate those also to see what kind of highest and best use we can use with, with these strips of green, whether we improve them with a trail, a soft trail, or a hard trail, or even an elevated boardwalk, depending on the environmental sensitivity of these areas. You know, there are certain types of construction that are allowed through federal and state standards. So we'll be looking at all of those when we're doing the Parks and Recreation Plan, but I do know that Mr. Pachetta is very interested and wants to be a big part of the Parks and Recreation Plan because what this offers us is not just the residential side of Parks and Recreation, but it also allows us and enables us, and I hope we get to do this with Perimeter Summit as well and other commercial districts, as what kind and forms of recreation do we offer to the employment base? What do they do during their lunch hour that we can entice them to get out and, you know, for health and fitness? What can they do within their own development? And as an economic development tool, that only increases the amenities for that project and helps them as they market their development. So I think that's how you say it, is that there's an acknowledgement of a willingness to participate, a willingness to look at highest and best use for their property for recreational purposes.
Yeah, I agree that we have a fantastic developer who has shown a tremendous interest in addressing those green space and connectivity issues. I just want to make sure we protect the city and the residents against the possibility of, you know, the REIT, you know, decides up in New York that they need to unload properties and they, Highwoods sells it to somebody who doesn't see it that way.
I agree, I think with the 10 or 15, with the 10 or 15-year build-out of a project of this type, that if there is an understanding, somehow it needs to be documented as part of this approval.
Right.
So that going forward, with all due respect, you know, the conversations between you and Mr. Pachetta, you know, may get lost somewhere down the line and I'd like to have it.
Well, I think it's hard to sound that into the record.
Yeah.
You acknowledge that there were three conversations today.
Right.
Respective to that, but there have been conversations since March.
Yeah, I recognize it's, it's a very difficult thing to define when you don't know what the actual development is and when it's going to take place and who ultimately may do it. But if you can provide those recommendations for us so that we are doing a good job of protecting the citizens from a future developer that might not have heard these conversations.
Exactly. And I think too, and I would ask you to please keep this in mind, you don't want to preempt the findings of your own plan and we don't want to call out for such a level of specificity to call out for certain improvements that you may not yet have an understanding of what the cost is for liability and maintenance.
Will he be here tonight, by the way?
Yes, they are coming tonight. Yes.
But it's only going to be comment, there's no open mic. I mean, there's no back and forth. It's just going to be comment time, right?
Well, but we...
And we can ask him questions.
He's the applicant.
Is that, oh, Bill just left. We'll have to ask, confirm that.
But is there a letter or a memo of understanding that could be made part, that could be recorded with the deed?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so if we could preserve it in such a way that it's there?
That sounds like, I mean, I...
In fact, that's a very good idea. I could, I could restate my conversations and understanding and he and I both could sign that.
Because I, I know, I've been involved with neighborhood agreements before where we have a memo of understanding and we record it with the deed.
Yes.
So that down the road, and this happened to be with St. Joe's Hospital, which was now recently bought by Emory, so we know that buffer between the neighborhoods still exists.
Yeah, that's a very good point. We could absolutely do it that way.
Okay. Yeah. One other thing on the conditions, when Mr. Pachetta was before us before, we had asked him if he would be agreeable to bringing forth a site plan approval as the developments come forward and he said he would. What would you think about us adding that as just an additional condition?
I think that certainly you're prerogative in some conversations, in one of my conversations with him today, he was a little concerned about that to the level of what is he submitting and what's going to be reviewed and, you know, could it be changed from what he is expecting as to what was approved as his densities and his land use activities per POD? So I think there has to be a little bit more clarification to that. I do think a good idea would be a reporting by your community development director as to what's coming in and even a statement of fact that it does comport and comply with the overall POD and... I don't know, were you saying something?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Thought you were nodding to me or something.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. That you could do it in that manner, but I think we need to be clear on what the expectation is that if you're looking for a site plan for approval, that you're expecting it to be in conformance with what the PODs have been approved.
What's allowed under what we're approving today.
Yeah, you know...
Because their concern would be just as yours, 10 years from now, it may be another council that is seated and they may say, no, we don't like what you're doing and you wouldn't want to put that owner or developer in a position to say, well, that's what was approved 10 years ago and that was the vision and so...
But do we have sufficient information at this time to understand that this property and this proposal does meet the PC3?
No, it doesn't meet it entirely, absolutely not. And we discussed that back in July. You don't have a zoning classification that fits this project with what it is intending to do today and what its plan is for the next 10 to 15 years. This is the closest zoning classification that fits. Absent creating a new zoning classification, which I hope we will when we, you know, do the comprehensive plan and then we recodify, I mean, I have a couple of districts in mind already that, that would fit for this project. But here's the other thing I want you to remember too, and that is, under PC3, there's residential requirements and there's others. You're only getting 100 acres of Century Center. Let the rest of it come in so that much of the PC3 can be addressed and met. The Gables Apartment Community is not part of this action. The, the anticipated residential component for the town center is a future use. Now, when that comes in, you know, that may raise that, that percentage, but until that happens and until the balance of what we know as Century Center and how they market Century Center, you don't have all of the acres that make up Century Center as part of this annexation application. You don't have the commercial component that's closest to I-85 that we believe will be coming in very soon, the residential component or the allowance for more residential on the other PODs.
So is it your recommendation that, I guess what we're trying to achieve is just make sure that we're not giving this developer a completely blank check.
And I, I agree with that.
We want to look out for the best interest of our city and our citizens.
Absolutely.
Right. I appreciate the master plan they brought in. It's pretty descriptive and I totally understand that this is a 50-year-old built-out 100 acres, but in dire need of some rebuilding and I'm quite excited that they want to come to us for this rebuilding.
Right.
So while we want to be business-friendly, welcoming to a great jobs creator in our community, a top-notch citizen, this is not somebody who trades their property every five years by any means, it's a, it's no wonder that there, there are some issues over who, you know, where they, where they're going to land, but do you feel like their proposal protects our citizens enough without us putting more conditions or restrictions on it?
I do, because I think it's, it's giving you that look into the future. It's a master plan. It is not a site plan, which is very specific in its layout of where the building footprint is, where the, the parking lot is going to be and a...
Yeah.
Saying something to me? I mean, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get mixed signals here.
When, when you said building layout, I was, I was trying to find the right piece of paper that showed me that building layout because what I've seen is just simply a color drawing that has bubbles.
That's what a master plan is, right.
You know, but there's no building shown on here.
That's what I was saying. A site plan gives you that level of specificity.
You know, the, the buildings I see are the existing buildings that are shown as a base map, but the master plan that shows, you know, there's nothing on here that shows where a million square feet and 500 apartments are going to be.
That's right, because that's why it's a master plan. It shows the POD that could provide and to allow that to occur. I mean...
I guess my definition of a, of a master plan pursuant to the zoning is a little different. You know, I've, I've seen them where it does have buildings on it, it does show parking lots and it does show buffers that are required pursuant to the code.
Well, and I think it's just to the level of master plan that you're accustomed to and, and I know exactly what you're saying. I've seen that, that type of specificity, but I've also worked with Mobile Oil on their 3,000 acres in Winward and it was just that. It was a POD-by-POD land use plan that showed marked as a certain color, residential, and the allowed and permitted uses that would go under that. A master plan is really the allowance to create a mini zoning ordinance for that project, specific to that project as here's where all of your residential will go in this POD, here's your mixed use and, and these are the allowances of the mixed use that would occur in that particular POD. And it can't show you the, the footprint of the building when you have multiple allowable uses because...
Right. We were just at the Perimeter Summit and they have a big, Rebecca's thing, what we have with Autotrader, they had a big topographic physical map of their area and I guess maybe it was five years old, I'm not sure how old it was, but there were buildings on it that didn't exist that the lady said, no, we're not going to build that, we're going to build something a little different here.
Right.
So I guess you could, you could do a master plan that shows proposed buildings, but it doesn't mean that's what they're going to build.
Well, exactly. And, and again, and, and using Ms. Williams' comment, which I think is indicative of all of you, that this is a very business-friendly community, a city, where you're encouraging the opportunity to grow employment base or to create an employment base. And for a mixed-use development, there has, it's inherent to have that flexibility. That's why you really would prefer a master plan. A master plan from a fiduciary responsibility on the city administration side is, when I look at that, my first thoughts are, what's it going to take to pick up the trash? How many police officers are we going to need? How much is it going to cause Public Works to look at maintenance of the storm sewer and this, and, and wait a minute, this is DeKalb County for water and sewers, so we're not responsible for that, but do they have capacity to meet the future build-out? So we're looking at how the project is served and even to the point for this annexation, your budget that you just approved includes the anticipation of this property being in the city to the point of adding four more police officers, looking at planning staff and what's going to be necessary for the amount of work that's going to be done. Mr. Pachetta told me they are working on plans right now. I expect that we should be seeing something from them hopefully by the, the end of this year. So I, again, you know, to respect your position on looking for that specificity, I understand that, but I think you have to look at the difference. This is a master plan that has a planning horizon of somewhere 15 years or even 20 years. So there has to be some flexibility to that, but there has to be the assurance and the specificity you're getting is the maximum densities that they're asking for. So they won't be able to exceed that and they're going to have to pick the uses and what will constrain them as they choose from this list will be the land itself. They're not going to be able to put a million square feet on one acre unless they're going to build a tube that goes 100 stories. So you have that. But the other thing that I would ask you too, is you have to have confidence in your staff that they are going to, they're going to be the gatekeeper of upholding the spirit of what was presented and what you've approved. If there is any deviation, and that's why the condition is, is so appropriate where it calls out for any substantial change, that's your community development director's responsibility. And if they can't make that decision or it's a wrong decision and the council at the time is unhappy, then that's your city manager's responsibility to be sure that person is functioning properly in their job and if they're not, that then has to be addressed. So when you get into master plans of this size and of this complexity, there has to be a trust on both sides, you know, and that's why it's so important that whatever is said by the applicant, it's captured in the minutes and the conditions are very clear as to what is being called out for, so...
You know, I think, let me jump in and just, just, you know, from a policy standpoint, I think that it's, these sort of council approvals or planning commission approvals are quite often in, or have been used in the past as tools to say, all right, what are you going to give me for this, for this kind of approval? And I would much rather see our city move in the direction of clear definition of our, of our zoning ordinances and define what these expectations are so that we're clear to the development community that if they're coming in and doing developments where they're building PC3 town centers, they've got expectations that they've got to provide these connectivity and infrastructure improvements. And I think that that's, from a policy standpoint, I, I would rather see our city move in the direction of defining what the, the rules are for our city and not using a form such as this in zoning hearings as a tool to negotiate.
I couldn't agree with you more. And that's, you know, negotiating from the podium, which is, which is never good for local government and just what you're asking for is what you're about to get. This past Friday, we released the RFQ request for proposals for the community comprehensive land use plan, the Parks and Recreation Plan, and the transportation plan. And just what you're asking for, when those documents are approved, that's what's going to enable and set the standards and requirements for all developments. If we had that in place today, we could then, there would be a condition, you know, plan and develop in accordance with our Parks and Recreation Plan. This project has such-and-such creek running through it. There was, you know, we are calling out for these types of parks and these types of improvements and these types of amenities, whether it's kayaking along the creek or, or trails that might be soft trails or hard trails or elevated trails. All of that is going to be in the plan. That's what enables you to protect the, the public and its future, all of that.
But I, but I think it's also important to point out that... But I think it's also important to point out that while I think we all support heading in that direction, that the approval tonight of this rezoning is based on the code as it exists today. What happens in the future does not retroactively apply to this zoning. So, if there are changes made heading in that direction, fine and dandy for the next guy, but for this particular zoning, it stands on the code as it exists today, not as how we think it will be and how it should be going forward. So, I just wanted to counsel that.
Well, you're right. You're right, exactly. But the good thing is, you have a master plan that identifies on a pod-by-pod basis what the land use activity is, what the densities are that are stated, and what the actual activity uses would be. So, you do have that, which is separate from a raw piece of dirt coming in as a PC three. So, you do have that, and I know what you're saying, and we're six months away from getting that level of concrete directive that you all are searching for and that we all want. But you've got conditions that are very clearly stated. You have a professional community development director with a staff. You have professional staff that are on board, that this is their job. This is their job.
And I think in the interim for where we are today, if we can define that sort of that letter of understanding with the property owner and sound that into the record, then I think it addresses the, in the best way possible, the plans we have today and understanding we have today without having those future questions.
Right. And I think, you know, even when you make comment, depending on what your motion ultimately is, is that we are expecting the plan to be developed as it's been presented with the densities that have been identified, and on the record, understand that if there is a substantial change, that is a deviation of such that is not in the spirit of this master plan, Mr. Developer, you understand you will be back before this board.
Could you define, could you, when you, when, could you give us a couple of examples of substantial change?
Where there is a office development, the pod shows that it has the ability to develop as 500,000 square feet. The developer comes in and says, "The market's changed, and I'm not going to do that, and I want to do residential." That's a change.
Substantial.
That needs to come back in. The community development director needs to take a look at that, because a couple of questions would first come to mind. All right, the developer is saying, "I don't want to do the 500,000 square foot of office because I could build 1,000 apartments." All right, well, wait a minute, let's take a look at the rest of your master plan. You're showing 500 multifamily units over here. Are you saying you're going to transfer that? Are you transferring it over here? Well, no, I'm not transferring over. I'm going to keep that, but I want to do new, okay? Well, then that new request gets you right back here to this podium. If, if the developer says, maybe it's 500 units, and there's 500 units in Pod A, and they're building in Pod D where it's office, "I want to take those 500 units and I want to transfer them, and I want to take that off the list." So, the overall master plan is still the same. The expectation and the services for that development are still what the city is planning financially to serve. That's okay. But with that, that would be a notice that would be given by the planning department, back through the city manager, and then it would go to the mayor and council, so that you understand, "Wait a minute, this, we're doing a shift here. We're taking what's already been approved."
Do we have to approve that?
And we're, no, you wouldn't. But it would be moved, and you would be given notice just so you have an update of what's happening in your plan. Now...
So, that's example of a non-substantial change?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, because you've already entitled the project and approved that. So, it's just going from one to another. Now, let me just say this. Let's just say, the movement of that already-approved 500 units goes to this other pod, but the roadway system of what has been developed thus far can't accommodate that capacity, that is a change. Then we come back. Then we come back.
There's a real positive here that I just want to make sure gets reiterated, and it was a comment made by Jim Paqueta, and the reason in the request for the PC three is that it allows this developer the opportunity to tell potential would-be new occupants that he has his zoning.
Yes.
And it's an extreme advantage in the marketplace, and that drives a lot of what we're doing here. A lot of what we're talking about here is trying to mitigate risk on behalf of us down the road. So, let me just ask a general question to you, a city manager, including Susan, for community development. Do you feel that, based upon the recommendations that you've given us to date and tonight as we go through this conversation, that the city is protected long-term from consequences that could result when we're not here and when you're not here, for future generations to be able to address the issues of concern?
Yes, I do.
Susan, do you want to speak to that too?
And if you're looking for more protection and a guarantee, then what you're asking for is the specificity of a site plan where you want all the buildings laid out and all the parking lot and every use identified, and what floor the commercial will be on and what floor the office. And you can have that, but I don't think the developer could give that to you.
Right. That's dictating the market and forced development.
This would not be able to do that.
You know, we've spoken about this before, and the premise I always come from, and I'll just say it one more time, is I always try to envision what a worst-case scenario would be, and that's what basically I'm throwing out at you. But Susan, if you want to add any comments to this, you're more than welcome.
While she's coming up, I think the concept that Rebecca was suggesting, that we're basically updating the master plan as each section is brought in, and that update being brought to council allows the developer to have that flexibility of understanding what the market conditions are at the time, that he brings forward each pod.
Are you asking that that be a reapproval?
That...
Because that gives no assurance to the developer to be able to receive or buy, you know, get loans to make any improvements, because...
He's got his zoning in place.
Right.
He's got his density in place.
Right.
But there is no specificity, excuse me, there is no specifics in the plan, because we don't know where that plan's going to be three, five, 10 years from now. As those points in the market where he chooses to develop a specific pod come to be, then that's when we were suggesting that plans come back for review that show what he thinks that area should be developed at that point in time.
But you're asking them to seek a reapproval, and you certainly can do, I mean, at the end of the day, it's your prerogative, and staff's going to implement what you all direct. But keep in mind how the developer is going to, this is not, if this were just a five-acre or 10-acre tract, that's one thing, but this is a multiple-acre, over 100 acres, 100-point something tract, of which each pod has been identified of a litany of uses. So, if I'm hearing you correctly, and if I'm not, please, please correct me. You're asking that developer who might have, if the pod says they can have 500 units, they would come back, submit that site plan to show the 500 units, and could be at risk to be told no. So, if that's the case, you have then completely eliminated the ability for that developer to market the property and to get financing, because there is no predictability.
Because we're not approving anything, because they're going to ask for permission 10 years from now, just the same, so there's no...
I got you. I see.
You know, I guess one of the things that gives me some comfort is that our code does provide that when they pull a land disturbance permit, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, that that's a pretty strong oversight, where you've got to have your site plan, your engineering studies, hydrology studies, arborist report.
Stormwater utilities.
Utilities.
Setbacks.
Setbacks.
All of the zoning regulations.
All of that. So, I mean, the more I think about it, that's a, that's a pretty robust process of site plan approval.
Correct.
That must go through our planning department.
Correct.
Right?
Absolutely.
As part of the process.
As part of the process, before a land disturbance permit could be issued, before the first building permit can be issued.
Right.
Susan, did you want to give us two minutes of your opinion, after hearing what you've heard and...
I've got 60 seconds.
Okay.
I was actually responding to Councilman Gaby's question relative to whether or not we felt the city would be protected, and then I was going to launch into what you just said, and that is, we do have a very strenuous land development review process, which does require review by the county as well, and also building plan reviews. So, there are a lot of reviews that have to take place. Just because you get these properties owned doesn't mean you can develop or build it. So, we do have to go through a lot of processes to ensure that all of that's complied with.
So, if there's a 500,000 square foot of commercial zoned, and they, and they, in five years, they are submitting plans for 500,000 square feet of commerce, some building or some little complex, and the traffic study says this will swamp Claremont Road because of the type of businesses it's going to be or the way they're building it, it could be not approved, could it not?
Well, we'll have to look at the whole, the totality of everything. We have to look at site, engineering, hydrology, transportation, building, zoning, and everything.
So, if they're dumping stuff into the creek and it's, you know, 10,000 cars a day, that's, even though they've got the zoning, you could say no.
We have to look at everything. So, that's my 60 seconds.
All right, what's next?
That's it on the agenda.
I've got...
Oh, that's right, sorry. On the, back to the work session agenda, just some updates from me.
Okay.
I actually have some questions on, some items on the upcoming agenda, the consent, one of the consent items. The Public Works, item number four.
Yes.
Couple of questions. Let me find my notes here. I apologize, too many papers. I see in the write-up that this could result in projects with estimated costs of $50,000 to $100,000 that will not be advertised and additional $100,000. Are those projects subject to the purchasing policy approvals that are, we passed earlier in the year where they'll come back to council for approval?
Yeah, they, yes, they would. Everything would be subject, the purchasing policy overrides everything, so it would be subject to the purchase policy.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, it is.
We had talked with the last one about, and I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's in progress, and the contract that was attached, we had talked at the last meeting about having some requirements of the personnel section of the agreement that required the contractor to either have, I don't know, background checks were the right words, but make sure that we as a city are protected, that the employees of our contractors that are going to be, coming in contact with the city have in fact been reviewed in some way. And I would hope that we would make that a part of any contract that we, that we put forward with the vendor that is working with and for the public, as this one will be.
Do we have a drug testing requirement, for instance?
We have, the contract does have a drug-free workplace requirement certification that they're supposed to sign. I also know that they have the E-Verify requirement that they're supposed to...
What about background checks?
I don't know that the contract has it. I don't know how much we can do that, impose on a vendor, that they require background checks on their employees.
Depends on what the sensitive nature of the job.
Like, if it's recreation, we would definitely do that, where there's coaches or coordinators or whatever, volunteers.
Or a guy driving a Public Works truck who's got six DUIs on his record.
Right.
Yeah, or a guy working on the side of the road in front of somebody's house that's got kids. You know, I mean, it all, you know, I'm sorry, but I think we need some...
Well, it's a different world, unfortunately.
Exactly. It really is. And I think we need some language in there in all of our contracts.
Yes.
You know, that deals with that type of situation.
I'd say drug testing and background checks, you know, and there, I guess there, I mean, we could go through Rick Stone to kind of, I'm sure he's got something already that we could, I don't think there's a problem with any contractor asking them to have the background and the drug tests requirement. Maybe, I don't know, do we review it, or do they have to do, are they just certifying that none of their employees are convicted felons and...
I would have to look at that, you know, in the drug-free workplace, basically, the burden on the testing is on them, and they're certifying to us that all their employees are drug-free.
Right.
I'm not sure about the other, how we would do that. I'd have to get with legal to see how we would do that in the contract language, to add that contract language, such that we would be able to review, certify background checks or put what requires that.
Marie, do you have any thoughts on, I think, I think we'd all agree that that's something we would like to have in all of our...
We're going to look at that and work through legal.
Okay.
You know, I know exactly what y'all are wanting there, so we'll do that. And again, it really depends on the level of interaction of that personnel. I mean, if there's an administrative person that's back there at headquarters, we're not interested in that.
Right.
We're interested in...
People are going to be on the streets in Brookhaven.
Who's going to have contact with the public, absolutely.
I'd like to make a small suggestion, and this is from experience, what we learned with the apartment inspections, is who's ever certifying these drug tests, they should be approved by the city of Brookhaven.
Yes, that's a good point. Yeah, we could use, we could require our screener.
Maybe we could require all of the vendors that are going to be having the employees on the streets of Brookhaven submit to the police department for, I don't want to burden you, but don't we have a GIS or a GCIC service, or will we farm that out? Would that be too much for you, or do we need to... willingly? Enthusiastically?
I think it really speaks to risk management for the city, because we're responsible and to a certain degree for the management of the subcontractors that we have. And so, you know, it's not only a public safety thing, but it's also a risk management thing, so as long as we have something in there that legal can address it.
And that follows up with finance where risk management is, so definitely Bonnie will be involved in that.
And along those same lines, I'd like to look at our insurance coverage. I mean, I'm surprised there's not an umbrella policy requirement for these contractors, you know, I mean, I, even on the little things that I do, I'm required to carry a two, three million dollar umbrella policy in addition to, you know, higher liability limits than what we're requiring for city vendors who are working on streets and with...
We'll review that. I know the levels that are in there are pretty standard for the construction industry and for the type of work they're doing, and I understand this is construction work, and this is, they're typical of what's required by cities in the construction work, but we will review those as well.
When you say review that, do you look at what's going on with the other cities surrounding us? Is that your basis?
What other cities are doing, what standard, you know, contract language for contracts of this type done by other cities and even by private companies.
Now that I've got you up here, it's captive, we still have the ugly wires hanging around in our, I'm sure some other folks have too. I would like Public Works crew to go and snip the wires down.
We will look into that. I don't, I can't promise that we can, because depending on the wires, there's safety...
I've touched them all, so they're not high.
Wait, I know we were following...
Only one was low.
That explains it.
Yeah, but we've been following up for four months now, and...
It's hard sometimes with these utility companies, finding out what utility company is...
I don't care who they are, they're leaving their stuff, and if they're, they, I really don't think, they've, they've given up any right to be griping about a wire hanging down on my street that was cut down by our Public Works Department. I mean, can we do that, Bill? They're barred by latches, I think, because that's a, there's a safety hazard in our neighborhood with wires that hang down, hanging five, six feet off the ground.
Those wires are...
The cable and telephone, they're not power, the power all the ti, I learned a lot about what wires are.
And those people that come out and cut wires?
We've asked for four months, and they haven't gotten any response, and I'm not going to wait anymore for them. Tired of it, you know?
It'd be a lot easier if the citizens who live there cut down wires.
Well, I'm sure they're terrified to do it, you know?
I understand.
They're in the public street, they're on the public...
I understand. It's a question, it's a question of the potential liability, but they'd kind of tell us that we tore it down.
Well, they left it, we cleaned it up. I don't, you know...
So, we can probably get somebody over there to test it and see if there's an active signal that's being pulsed through it.
Okay. We can do that.
We can do that.
Okay.
Going back to the, to the contract.
Yes.
Looking through your pricing, Blunt was, was certainly not low on anything. I'm curious why they were, or how are you going to assign projects and how the work is going to be, and why they're included with the pricing being predominantly higher threat of capacity.
Some of it, and we are looking at, to apply it with, some of it is expertise in certain areas, and also to look at the combination, because you have all those unit prices, you might have a job that might have, there's probably, you know, a couple hundred unit prices. A typical job might have 10 or 15 of those. So, looking at which contractor for that particular job gives the lowest price, and also, you know, there's, but there's also workloads and expertise. Blunt is an expert in certain types of the construction, whereas, you know, they might be strong in, you know, excavation and backfilling, where one of the other contractors is more stronger in pipelining. So, it depends on the type of project that we're trying to do.
So, do you see us bidding a particular project to one or two of these, or are you just going to assign it to a particular contractor?
It'd be more assigned. That's what the whole, we have the unit prices are fixed, so we're not having to bid them out again. We can, but we, when we do a project, we'll develop a list of quantities for that project, and so we'll be able to pull from those unit prices and price out the job based on the contractors we have to find which one will give us the best price for that job.
I have no more questions, thank you.
Is that a satisfactory answer on that? Are you satisfied with that answer?
You know, I mean, it puts a lot of burden on you to not only come up with a price, but also to a certain extent, you're going to, you become a contractor, and I guess there's some inherent risk in that, because you're telling the contractor or telling the person that you're assigning this to what his material units are going to be, and there's an inherent problem with that. I mean, obviously, he's got unit prices, so they can mark it up if they use more, but.
Well, if they use, I mean, that's, the unit price contract is typical for roadway and stormwater work, and, but it fixes the unit cost. So let's say, we say that it's 100 foot of 18 inch pipe, and so that's how we price out the job. If they need 105, we end up paying for 105 foot, but the unit, the price per foot of pipe doesn't change. So, we're still locking in that price. But if we say 100 and then it's only 90 foot installed, then we only pay him for 90 foot. We actually pay, you pay for the installed, but typically for each job, I mean, that's the standard thing to develop a set of plans and come up with quantities for those, for that project.
Who's doing the plans for the, are the contractors doing the, if it entails more than just a simple replacement or?
The, we would either do the plans in-house, or if we need to, we could hire outside, and for bigger jobs, we might hire and do an RFPU for an outside engineer to help us.
So effectively, we act as the general contractor for the work going forward?
No, we don't act as a general contractor, we act as the construction manager and the design manager, project managers for these projects. The general contractor, they are the general contractors, we're not taking on any contractor liability.
I think you're saying the duties of the general contractor rather than the liabilities.
Yeah, well, it's not really, it's more the duties of a project manager than it is of a general contractor.
Because you're not going out there overseeing the employees.
Right.
All right.
Thank you. Any else, anything else on the consent agenda, anybody have any comment on? All right, so.
Back to the work session.
Back to the work session.
Right, and these are just three matters, other business, just wanted to give you an update on the quit claim deeds. We are still waiting for the law department at DeKalb County to provide that to us.
Have we sent a letter to them recently saying?
Bill's office has been working with that.
We have, they called us last, at the end of last week, and they wanted to set up a date certain, and because, because there's going to be a transition, we told the chief assistant that we would get the new city attorney, talk to him earlier this week about it. But they're looking to have a sit-down and work out. Really wasn't, it was not appropriate at that, at the end of last week for us to charge into something that they're going to get into a three or four week process with, but they're ready to go.
Are there any, there's nothing that you're going to be working on after today, is that correct, except for handing over?
It's my understanding that I'm going to do the solicitor work, and if it's the will of the council, it's my understanding that the governor had asked us to continue to work on the annexation, to work with him and drafting both the, some of the things that go on to be discussed later.
Okay, anything else?
All we have is a transition letter that we prepared and we'll turn over to the city attorney on tomorrow.
Will there be a meeting with the city attorney?
I'm always available to help.
Okay, okay.
If any transition he might need.
Okay, all right.
On the deeds, I just ask two things. Is one, what continues to hold it up, number one? Number two is, have we pursued Mike in GSI? To do his map and have us come up with what the conformity needs to be of the parks?
He has prepared a map of what he believes to be all of the city parks. What we are waiting for is, I think it's better for us to receive from the county what they think are the city parks.
Yes, I agree.
And the size, acreage assigned to that, and how they are identifying the improvements because there is specific law to how much we pay if it has an improvement on it or not. So, we're waiting for that so that we can then compare that to what our map shows. If we find discrepancies, then that's where we'll have our conversation.
Right, right.
Are we sending anybody down to the records room in the Superior Court?
Well, I have talked with Josh Hirsch, with JLL, they, that firm has been contracted by DeKalb County to identify an inventory, all property owned by DeKalb County.
Okay.
So I've talked with him about our interest in what he's finding on parks and recreation, but, and there's more that I'll be able to share with you later, but there's, there's more there.
Is there, maybe that's an executive session on the real estate or something? Okay.
We would anticipate that we'll end up with the true meets and boundaries of where, I mean, I'm thinking about the parks that are even adjacent to residential areas, we want to be real clear as to what the boundary lines are.
Yes, absolutely. And I have some reservations that we might not get all of that for every park. Some of them, I think there will be more, especially where conveyances were made from one agency to another, or where property was purchased with grant funds, which requires surveys and more information for meets and bounds. I think what, you know, we'll have to do in the future, however, once we do get this, for next year's budget, I do want to put funds in there for surveying, because we will probably have to do that.
We might end up having to just go off the boundaries of the private property around parks.
Correct, yeah, I mean, it's going to be an undertaking, but that's really the way we're going to have to do it, so we know what's ours, because, just because of liabilities. We just need to know.
Well, we don't need to be putting trails in people's backyards or having their gardens grow.
And also, you know, where we would put trails, or even if it's an improvement of a small building that might be a maintenance building, we need to adhere to our own standards, such as setbacks.
Yeah, and buffers.
We want to be respectful to our neighbors, and we don't want to infringe on their enjoyment of their property too.
Especially if there's like a moonshiner in the woods at Murphy Cantler, we wouldn't want to infringe on his cooperation.
Well, we might want to use his shed if he has one for maintenance.
You know, I believe originally that the park, a lot of the land at Murphy Cantler and even Blackburn was originally donated, so it'll be interesting to see what the original titles were.
Y'all know something about a shine stand that I don't. Murphy Cantler.
All right.
Okay, item number two, just to give you an update, and you'll be seeing more information as we progress through the fall, and that's the vendor contracts. I need to give you a status of that. As you know, all of the contracts are on a 12-month award, and they do expire December the 31st. I have notified our vendors that I, and there's a provision within the contract that allows me to sit down and negotiate for the second year. There is no, there is no grant of a second year without negotiating that. So, I have contacted all the vendors, meetings have been set up, and I will be sitting down with them to do that. I have also put them on notice that if we don't come to a resolution, then I will be bidding it out. So, we'll be working on that, and what that means for you all is that at some point in the future, you will be receiving contracts to review and approve and to authorize the mayor to sign. So that will be coming before the end of the year.
How does this segue with our timeframe for our budget updates, which is coming up in the next week?
It is, correct. The department heads, most of them have completed their budget proposals, the finance director is reviewing those, and then she and I will be getting together later this week. There are a couple of departments, because of just activities that are occurring and trying to project what the needs are, probably will not get that information until maybe Monday of next week at the latest. And then, what I'll do after that is during this week, after I meet with the finance director, I'll be sitting down with the finance director and the department head, and we'll be going over their budgets. Once that activity and exercise is completed, then I'll be getting with each of you to go over the budgets. I'll sit down with the mayor first and review, and then go back through all of you so that you understand, you know, what's in there and what the expectations are, and most importantly, the why of.
Was, could Bonnie give us a quick, small update on the revenues? Have they, have they been still coming in what we expected? Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Is that okay with you, Bonnie?
It's always good news.
Yeah.
But just on your point, what do you think is the timeframe of us, of meeting with council members? Is that next week or the following?
It's going to be the following, most likely.
Two at a time?
So, the third week in October?
Yes, which would be the week of the 14th.
Okay. Actually, we're going to have a draft by next week, because the charter calls for October 15th to have the first draft.
Okay.
At that point, we'll also have a public copy available, we'll have it on our website. We'll run an ad for the public hearing dates, which are the two, two meetings in November, the 2nd and the 4th, Tuesday of November will be the public hearings on the budget. And right now, the schedule is to adopt, I think it's December 10th, the first meeting in December.
But we have public hearings scheduled for November.
Right, and we'll be advertising that.
Any update on the revenue picture at all?
I'm trying to think. Our host money has started to come in. I didn't realize it was, comes in in monthly increments, for some reason, I thought it would come in all at once. So we're getting about $600,000 a month for the last three months, so that's a good thing. We're going to put it in a special account. We actually did the paperwork today at the Brookhaven Bank, we're going to put that there.
Okay.
So it won't get mingled and accidentally spent.
Does the, does the buyout of the Brookhaven Bank have any impact on us?
No, if it does, I think it's all positive. It's a much larger bank, and that, part of the problem with our, not a problem with the, putting our host money in there is that being public money, they have to put up reserves against it, and they were having trouble doing that, because they didn't have a very big deposit base. This helps in that, it also helps in lending, they'll have a whole lot. And it sounds like they're the same type of people, they're very community involved, and they want to be part of the Brookhaven community, so if there's any change, it's positive.
Occupational taxes, we were at, what, 90 something percent?
Yeah, I think we're, we're going to be at 100% by the end of the year, yeah.
Oh, so we're on track for that.
Yeah, Nathan sometimes goes out with the code enforcement people. He'll stand and take pictures in the lobby of businesses on the marquees.
Okay.
I think we're in good shape, and we've still got that alternative of doing a special study, we haven't engaged anybody, but we could do that too. Property taxes, right on target. Actually, the, when we build for the street, the traffic calming homes and the streetlights, we actually got in more than we anticipated, so that's a good thing. So, does the property tax come in as residents pay it? Yeah, I think there's about a week lag. We get a direct deposit from DeKalb County of everything they've collected through a certain date. I don't think, right now, we're getting almost a million dollars, probably every 10 days. I think that will peak when all the escrow accounts pay, and then it'll start declining, so I think we're right on target to collect everything. Do the banks all pay at a particular time, or do they wait till the last minute, or? My only experience is in Henry County, there was one date when it seemed like all the escrow agencies paid, or agents paid, so. And do they pay the entire amount? Like individually, you would pay it possibly in two payments? Normally, when, yeah, the escrow agents pay it all at once. Just pay it at once. Yeah, because people have been paying into their escrow all year long. The banks, I'm sure, hold on to it as long as they.
Well, thank you very much, Bonnie.
One last question. Marie had alluded to the fact that we've already got budgeted on the expense side for Century Center, all the costs associated with providing services, but we haven't included them on the revenue side, have we?
No.
Yeah, good.
That wouldn't be hard to do.
Thanks.
One other quick question on the building fees. I know that was coming in much higher than we originally proposed, how is that looking? It continues, I'll get, when I get Susan's budget, we have a chance to go through it, I don't know if that's sustainable into next year, but we definitely exceeded this year. And I'm projecting for next year, a little bit higher than what we got this year. I'll confirm that with Susan, see if that's, there could be a couple large projects in there that kind of might not be repeated next year.
One last thing, the revenue, what was the name of that package you produced for the council?
Revenue manual.
The revenue manual, will that be a public document that, I mean, I know it's a public document, but would, will we be, this may be for Marie, will we be publishing that? Because I think some citizens might be curious.
We could put it on the website.
I think it's got some really interesting, you know, I mean, things such as, I mean, what percentage of the personal property taxes or residential property taxes are our budget as a city? It's 30%, and might shock some people to know.
It's a major component, definitely. I'll get with Daniels and Megan.
All right, thank you, Bonnie.
Okay, next item is the update on Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan. Last week, Susan and Bates and myself interviewed three firms for their presentation regarding their qualifications for Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan. We have narrowed it down to one firm and have invited them to submit a proposal, a cost proposal to us, so we expect that to be very soon, and we'll be reviewing that, I'll be reviewing that, and then negotiating that contract, and then that contract will come back before you all. So, it's my hope that we'll have that back, the first meeting in November, if not by, well, let's see, let me just look at the date. It could be as early as the 22nd, but I'm not really sure. I feel more comfortable with saying November the 12th, but we'll work to see how quickly we get it and how quickly we can come to an agreement.
I don't know that I fully understand what the end product is from these proposals, will they give us a report, will they?
Yes, it will be a report. It will, it'll be almost like a mini comprehensive plan that specifically focuses on Beaufort Highway, looking at the current built environment and what, what improvements could be made in terms of serviceability as to what their market share would be, customer radius, to attract certain types of developments. Because Beaufort Highway runs parallel to 85 and has great access to an interstate, it opens the door to many other uses. Restaurants are certainly one. The residential component that's out there now, you know, what is the possibility to improve upon that, and what should it be? Should it be more urban? And should, you know, the recommendations would be, could be, you know, increase the height allowances, increase the densities to allow more residential to come in, and thereby could create the need and the desire for certain services and institutional uses to come in, such as certain restaurants, maybe tablecloth restaurants. Institutional uses could be medical or other types of office or banking, or it could even be uses such as single-family homes as a complement, as you go further out of the 1,000 feet or within that 1,000-foot corridor on each side of Beaufort Highway. So, first and foremost, an examination of the current built environment, the status of that environment, because we'll be looking at, on the commercial side, vacancy rates, what's out there. We'll do the typical, the strengths, weaknesses, and what we can do to improve upon that. I do expect recommendations to come out on certain standards, regulatory controls, streetscape initiatives, so that we can really set aside what Beaufort Highway should look like, so that it has instant recognition, and then a marketing approach on how we market that, and how we work with the greater community to locate on Beaufort Highway, and working through Georgia Power and the State Economic Development Agency, so that we can get on their lists, so that when they're showing prospects, Atlanta, they'll come to Brookhaven and show the possibilities that are available. And then, how we incentivize that, that will also be part of the package.
So do they actually meet with, say, the property owners of, say, this property or this plaza?
Yes.
And say, well, what are your plans, or what would you like to do?
Yes.
Are you interested in redeveloping?
Yes, they'll do that, and I'll be coming back to you all for names for steering committee. We'll want to include people that live here, we'll want to include landlords, we want to include these representatives from this complex, and so we're going to reach out, those that live, work, and, you know, sleep here, eat here, work here, we want to engage them.
Can you give a summary of who, what firms you interviewed, and the firm that you believe is the stronger candidate at this point?
I've got the list.
No, I do, I just want to be sure we've notified those that were not selected, so I just want to be fair to them. Okay, good, all right. Jaeger was a firm that was selected and invited to submit a cost proposal to us, they've done quite a bit of work in Georgia and, you know, out of state. They're very heavily oriented into the component of recognition from the standpoint of streetscape, but also, one of their strengths was the marketability of the area, even to the point of identifying end users that we would be able to attract because of understanding what their components and. what their components and requirements are for customer radius and income levels and availability of space that could accommodate them. They're going to be looking very closely, a lot of experience on our nodes of intersection along Beaufort Highway. So, they were asked to come in to submit that. The second group that we interviewed was, I'm going to do it, I'm not going to do it justice in how I pronounce it, Myop? Myop? Or Stiop?
Oh, Saif.
Saif, thank you.
Yes, Saif.
Thank you. And then the third one was...
Bleakley.
Bleakley, thank you. Bleakley. So, we interviewed three, we had nine submittals, and they were the strongest of the nine. And so, we're hopeful that we'll get a good cost proposal and be able to work through the details of that, and how they deliver on time. We have a short timeframe for them to get started, get to work, because we want to be able to come back to you all in early spring for review, public hearings, and adoption. And this will go to the planning commission first. This is a tool that, once we get it into draft form, and I would hope, and I would expect that you all would appoint the chairman of the development authority to be on this steering committee, because this will be a very important tool for our development authority as we recruit.
Can I, may I speak a little bit more about, about that experience?
Briefly.
Yeah, just, just want to say, outstanding firms. I think we chose the right firm. We really have embarked upon the first step of creating sort of this planning phase. And I think that the greatest, the greatest realization that I saw was that we've got urban planning thought leaders, economic development thought leaders, helping the city of Brookhaven create plans to create, to make the highest and best use for our city areas. And so, I'm extremely excited about the opportunity of having these people come in, develop the plan, work with the citizens, get a lot of stakeholder and public engagement to create the strongest economic Beaufort Highway corridor that we can create.
Who's doing, who's doing the economic component of Jaeger?
Urban Partners, I believe is the one that, oh, yeah, of Jaeger, right.
There were two firms that were teeming.
Is there concern that they're not a local firm and that...
No, I think that's better that they're not, because I think they can be even more objective. I mean, I think there's going to be a need for some real truths told to us as to what the challenges are.
And Jaeger is from where?
Gainesville, Georgia.
Georgia.
They have office there, they have one here in Atlanta, and there was one more office that they had.
Urban Partners has Charleston and New Jersey offices.
Right. They've done a lot along the East Coast. Examples that they shared, some innovative things that they did that I'm excited about, especially along our water course on Beaufort Highway. They talked about, you know, the backs being turned and what could be done, and they showed us one. Of course, it was on a very large river, but they launched out with a pathway and created a park. It almost looked like the Seventeenth Green.
Yeah.
What's the name of that?
TPC Salt Grass.
Yeah, Salt Grass, yeah. So, it was really innovative that they...
It was, it was the Jersey waterfront.
Yeah.
As Hoboken, Jersey.
Yeah, Hoboken.
So, they've done work with the Jersey Shore.
They have, they've hired the Jersey Shore to...
The New York Shore on the Jersey side of the river.
I think we'll get some out-of-the-box thinking.
So, how, if somebody wanted to come in and put the Brookhaven Eye over there, or some cool feature, I mean, how would they communicate that to them?
Well, they need to just, they need to contact me, or, you know, of course, Susan Cannon, that they have ideas or interests. I mean, we're going to publicize those. We'll be, in the meetings, we'll be working through communications to get that word out, and hopefully, the media that's here will cover all of the announcements of those meetings. We want, the more people that want to go on, the better.
I mean, what would be more typical would be, I mean, are there hospitals, or are there other, you know, large companies that would have ideas for things? I mean, they would, this company would find a way to draw them in, or let it be known that we're looking at...
Well, most of the draw is going to come from us and from you all, as to who you would like to be included as the steering committee.
So, we will have some input in that, too?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Because we're going to want to know who you would like to be included as part of the steering committee.
Okay.
Definitely.
Obviously, we've got a large population, or diverse population on the Beaufort Highway corridor. What experience does that team have with regard to dealing with culture, particularly the Latino culture that's along Beaufort Highway?
Well, they do have experience, and all the firms did in that. And I think it's of any, any representative of any population, I mean, we need to engage them, we need to bring them in. We talked about LAA, making sure we reached out to them. We have some owners that, we have Hispanic ownership in one of our apartment complexes. That's definitely, we want to include her. We want to include the variety of businesses that, we almost have a United Nations here on Beaufort Highway, and we definitely want to be sure nobody's left out.
Yes, specifically, Urban Partners has worked with the Ki치.
Yes.
Ki치's in Charleston, and Jaeger has worked in national parks with American, Native American populations, so...
Right, so they have that experience.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
And also, I just want to answer Jim's point about the public input. The firm did have a portion of their timeline dedicated to stakeholder outreach and public input, so I think they'll invite those, those times.
All right, thank you, Marie.
Yes, that's it, thank you.
So, announcements, no announcements?
Yeah, one.
Do you have an announcement?
Well, could I request that during the agenda, you make an announcement about the Marta Charettes, that type of place?
Yes, yes, we'll do that. You, I'll, I'll cede some of my time and let you do that if you'd like.
I'd like you to...
Okay, I'll do it. All right, I'll just need the dates on those. All right, next.
And, I can't hear you.
Food trucks.
Food trucks, always the one? Well, yeah, there's a walk, school walk tomorrow, starts at one-thirty, correct? And it's going to be at Woodward Elementary School. Chief Yandora and myself will be there, and this will be an opportunity for us to walk with students and parents from the school to homes down along Beaufort Highway. We'll have the opportunity to discuss anything they want to talk about, and we can share what's going on at the city level. So, you're all welcome to join us if you'd like. You have your little, nope?
You know how far away that school district's outside.
If you're going to join me, you're going to have to walk from your homes, though, just to prove you really want to do it.
Thank you, all right.
It's going to be Chief Yandora and myself.
All right. And Jim?
And Jim, yeah, I'm sorry. He's going to run there.
Was that International Walk to School Day? So, we walk our kids to school that day, or?
In partnership with DeKalb Board of Health.
In partnership with?
DeKalb Board of Health.
DeKalb Board of Health.
DeKalb Board of Health, yes, that's right, thank you. Thank you, Megan.